The December 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting now comes to order, please rise. Congratulations to the class of the United States of America, to the people who stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, everyone.
Good evening. The deceased residents for the month of November 2021. Viola Regone. Kathleen Devlin. Mary Ann Icona. And Richard Russo Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Heller, here's a roll call. Roll call, Mr. Heller.
President.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
President.
Mayor Leslie.
President.
Mr. Vasquez is in New York. Miss Switke.
President.
Mr. Patterson.
President.
Mr. Gilroy, uh, Bill Wells.
Here.
Mr. Catanen.
Here.
Mr. Willert here, Mrs. Boyle. Chief Montalvo.
Here.
Chief Weiss.
Here.
That concludes roll. Thank you, Service Board, are you ready?
Good evening, Coburn Elementary School reports. Last month, our students made Veterans Day cards, and on Veterans Day, students in grades K-5 created cards thanking veterans for their service and sacrifice. Our 4th grade student council organized this wonderful card drive. We also hosted a canned food drive. Coburn Student Council hosted the drive as well, where they collected hundreds of non-perishable items donated by Coburn families. The drive benefited the local city team outreach program. American Education Week was also celebrated in November. Coburn celebrated American Education Week. We celebrate and work with our children to have an understanding and developing and growth mindset. It's a monthly area of focus at Coburn Elementary. In November, during American Education Week, parents were invited to join in on the monthly growth mindset lesson through a homeless school project, which are now displayed outside of the classrooms. Health cards. Students in grades K to 5 created cards of gratitude and appreciation for local healthcare workers this holiday season. Thank you again to our 5th grade student council and their advisor for helping to organize this card drive for our local healthcare heroes. We enjoyed a, uh, our first in-person book fair since the fall of 2019. All the students really enjoyed browsing and shopping for their favorite books. And currently this month, Coburn Elementary is hosting a toy drive that began December 1st, the 17th. Students or families may bring unwrapped new toys to the school, place them in the bin at the main entrance or the car line entrance, and the toys this year will benefit the Moore's AI Dupont Hospital for Children. And once again, we have a lot of action happening at Coburn daily, so follow us on Twitter. If you'd like to check it out, or just go to our Coburn webpage and click on the Twitter account, you'll see all the great activities that are happening today. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas again.
Merry Christmas.
Ms. Ford, you mentioned the memorials that they were doing for the veterans at the elementary school. For the history buffs that are in the audience, tomorrow is December 7th, which happens to be the 80th anniversary of the Japanese bombing of Pearl Harbor, that of course led the United States into the entry of World War II.
Well, thank you for that, and hopefully our cards did address some of our veterans who served and sacrificed, and we enjoy doing that. Last year, we hosted a very large Veterans Day celebration, and we're hoping to be able to get back to that again next year, when we can do an in-person celebration and host our veterans. It was, it was quite a wonderful celebration for our local veterans, so thank you for that piece of information, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, happy holidays. Mrs. Heller, take it, take it from here? Oh, I didn't read Chief Weiss's letter. Chief Weiss, get up. Go ahead, sir.
Alright. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here tonight. I welcome our residents, fellow officers, and the family and friends of Officer James Calso and Ryan Eastman, as they are about to be sworn in as full-time officers of the Brookhaven Borough Police Department. This is a special night not only for these officers and their families, but also for our police department and our borough. I'd like to begin by saying thank you to Mayor Leslie, to Council President Mr. Heller, the Police Committee, all of council, our solicitor, Mr. Wills, and our Civil Service Commission. Your proven commitment to advancing our police department has never been more evident, and for that, I thank each of you. The speed at which we were able to complete this hiring process is unprecedented. It was clearly apparent to me back when I went through the hiring process for the position of Police Chief, that our mayor and council are committed to assisting in making our department the premier department in this area. Tonight, we advance that goal by promoting these incredible two officers. From the moment I stepped into this police department, I recognized that Officer Calso and Officer Eastman possessed leadership qualities. They are always eager to learn, get involved, and assist fellow officers. In a time where law enforcement across our nation is seeing a rapid decline in those seeking out law enforcement careers, these two officers continue to excel, shine, and push forward. They have proven to be fair and just in all that they do. They emulate our core values of integrity, respect, and trust. Their drive and determination to make our community a better and safer place to live is commendable. They not only work in our community, but they are part of our community, as they both reside here. Officer James Calso is 23 years old, attended Coburn Elementary School and Sun Valley High School. He also attended Delaware County Community College. He previously worked for Darby Borough Police Department before beginning his career with our department. James is joined here tonight by his mom Carol, his dad Jim, sisters Melissa and Jessica, and his nephew Mason, as well as his friends. Officer Ryan Eastman is 25 years old, a Brookhaven resident for over 12 years. He attended our media charity, Sun Valley High School, and Delaware County Community College. He's a Brookhaven Bay Ruth baseball coach and grew up playing sports here in Brookhaven. He began his career in law enforcement with Upland Borough Police Department before being hired with our department. And Ryan is joined here tonight by his family and friends, including his dad John, his stepmom Shannon, his grandmom Debbie, sister Jenna, nephew Terrence, and his uncle Jim, and of course, his better half Jordan, and her family. Uh, and for those who don't know, Ryan and Jordan are expecting their first child here.
That's why I'm a bit nervous.
Okay, that's hilarious. And although not present here tonight physically, I am confident that Ryan's mom is here with him and his family, and will be watching over him and keeping him safe. We wish you the best as you embark on this incredible career of opportunity. We place our faith and trust in each of you. We know that you will do great things. Never lose sight of the incredible feelings of joy, happiness, and the accomplishment that you feel tonight. Always remember the incredible support system you have in all of us, and most importantly, don't forget one other thing: all yes, no breaks. Can I just want to turn it over to Mr. Heller?
I don't know how I follow that. I sort of say they're both outstanding young men, they're residents, as the chief pointed out. Uh, I've gotten to know them both, I've known Ryan a little longer than James, they're they're great young professionals, and I have no doubt that you guys are going to serve us for decades, so. Congratulations, Phils. Mrs. Heller?
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to start out with, uh, do I need to put the...
No.
No.
So this is a resolution of the Borough of Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the hiring of part-time officer James D. Calso to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department. It's very new because it's both its own. Whereas Officer James D. Calso was hired as a part-time patrolman with Brookhaven Borough Police Department in January of 2021, and whereas Officers James D. Calso graduated from the Delaware County Municipal Police Academy in December of 2018, and whereas Officer James D. Calso also served as a part-time patrolman with the Darby Borough Police Department from April 2019 until January of 2021. And whereas during his tenure as a part-time patrolman with the Brookhaven Borough Police Department, Officer, Officer James D. Calso has distinguished himself in the discharge of his law enforcement duties and earned the high respect of the Chief of Police, the fellow officers, and the citizens of Brookhaven Borough. And whereas, the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission recently conducted written and oral hiring examinations for the position of full-time patrolman in the Police Department. And whereas Officers James D. Calso successfully completed the examinations as a candidate for such a position and is ranked first on the commission's certified eligibility list. And whereas, by correspondence dated November 10th, 2021, the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission has certified that Officer James D. Calso has met all eligibility requirements for appointment to the position of full-time patrolman. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Brookhaven, and is hereby resolved by the authority of state, that Officer James D. Calso shall be appointed to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department for probationary period of 12 months. Upon completion of the probationary period and upon written notification from the mayor and Chief of Police that Officer James D. Calso's performance has been satisfactory, such appointment shall be made promptly. It is resolved this 6th day of December 2021, sealed by the Brookhaven, Borough of Brookhaven, Council President Terry Heller, approved by the Mayor Denise Leslie, and Secretary John J. Wilber.
I'll take a motion to adopt. I'll make the motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The resolution carries. Resolution is 2021-24.
Hi, Mr. James, your dad. You can come up here if you want.
Tell you what, Phils, you guys are trying to change something. Brookhaven Borough, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty note. Repeat after me. I, James Calso.
James Calso.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support.
That I support.
Owe and defend.
Owe and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
As a full-time.
As a full-time.
Brookhaven.
Brookhaven.
Police officer.
Police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Witness my hand and official seal on this 6th day of December 2021, Mayor Denise Leslie.
Congratulations, James.
Thank you.
One more, Mrs. Heller.
May I just hear with me? A resolution of the Borough of Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the hiring of part-time officer Ryan S. Eastman to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department. Whereas Officer Ryan S. Eastman was hired as a part-time patrolman with the Brookhaven Borough Police Department in February 2018, and whereas Officer Ryan S. Eastman graduated from the Delaware County Municipal Police Academy in June of 2017. And whereas Officer Ryan S. Eastman also served as a part-time patrolman with the Upland Borough Police Department from 20, August 2017 until October 2018. And whereas during his tenure as a part-time patrolman with the Brookhaven Borough Police Department, Officer Ryan S. Eastman has distinguished himself in the discharge of his law enforcement duties and earned the high respect of the Chief of Police, the fellow officers, and the citizens of Brookhaven Borough. And whereas the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission recently conducted written and oral hiring examinations for the position of full-time patrolman in the Police Department. And whereas Officer Ryan S. Eastman successfully completed the examinations as a candidate for such a position and is ranked second on the commission's certified eligibility. And whereas, by correspondence dated November 10th, 2021, the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission has certified that Officer Ryan S. Eastman has met all eligibility requirements for appointment to the position of full-time patrolman. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Brookhaven, and is hereby resolved by the authority of state, that Officer Ryan S. Eastman shall be appointed to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department for probationary period of 12 months. Upon completion of the probationary period and upon written notification from the mayor and Chief of Police that Officer Ryan S. Eastman's performance has been satisfactory, such appointment shall be made promptly. It is resolved this 6th day of December 2021, Borough of Brookhaven, signed by Council President Terry Heller, approved by the Mayor Denise Leslie, and also by John J. Wilber, Jr., the Borough Secretary.
With that, I'll take a motion to adopt.
Sure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Congratulations.
That'll be Resolution 2021-25.
We ready?
Hold on, Mayor.
Is everybody ready? Josh, ready?
Yep.
Brookhaven Borough, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty note. Repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Ryan Eastman.
Ryan Eastman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemn, solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And obey.
And obey.
To defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As a full-time.
As a full-time.
Brookhaven Police Officer.
Brookhaven Police Officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Witness my hand and the official seal this 6th day of December 2021, Mayor Denise Leslie. Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome aboard, nothing else we need to learn. Out.
Congratulations, Phils. We can all go home now.
Let's have a quick meeting so we can have the reception board.
It goes right downhill from there.
Is there anyone for public discussion? Please come up and turn the podium to its... Alright, is there anyone for public discussion? The first public discussion session is closed. Mr. Wills, we give this to Brookhaven Borough.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the Solicitor's Report is on file with the Bureau Secretary's Office, in case any members of the public would like to review that report. We have a couple of action items that I would like to report on this evening. One concerns Delkor's Eastern Service Area Act 537 Plan Update. Delkor is proposing to redirect wastewater flows from its Eastern Service Area, which currently discharges Philadelphia's Southwest Water Pollution Control Center, to Delkor's Treatment Plant in Chester, Pennsylvania. Specifically because the city of Philadelphia has raised rates over the last few years to a fairly large extent, and there is concern about cost controls with regard to the Eastern Service Area flows. I had made a presentation to the Borough Planning Commission at its meeting in November. At that time, the Planning Commission noted unanimously to recommend approval of alternate number 2 for the construction of a tunnel to storage demands and expansion of Delkor's Western Regional Treatment Plant in the city of Chester. And therefore, I do have for Borough Council's consideration, this evening, a resolution adopting Delkor's Eastern Service Area Act 537 Plan Update for the Borough's Sewage Services and I'll read a very truncated portion of that resolution, which basically says whereby Section 5 of Act of January 24, 1966, known as the Pennsylvania Sewage Facility Act, has amended in the rules and regulations of the Department of Environmental Protection adopted there under Chapter 71 of Title 25 of the Pennsylvania Code, requires that each municipality to adopt an official sewage facility plan provided for sewage services adequate to prevent contamination of wastewater and/or environmental hazards with sewage waste, and to revise said plan if necessary to meet sewage disposal needs of the individual municipality. Whereas, 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 there, they have now therefore been resolved that Borough Council hereby adopts and submits to the Department of Environmental Protection for approval the updated official plan of the Brookhaven Borough, known as the Act 537 Plan Update, that Borough Brookhaven hereby issue to the Department of Complete and Timely Implementation of Said Plan to Be Required by Law. Obviously, if this is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order at this time to adopt that said resolution, and then that copy of that resolution would be forwarded by our esteemed Borough Secretary to the officials at Delkor.
What's the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or any questions? Motion carries.
The, uh, resolution number is 2021-2C.
Second issue concerned the property at 4115 Edgemont Avenue. I may have recorded on this particular property at the workshop meeting, I have been requested by the Council President to assist with the code enforcement officer in the prosecution of a citation against the property owner for maintaining junk in abandoned vehicles at that particular site. Then pleased to report that the property owner was in fact found guilty of that citation, ordered to pay a $300 fine plus court costs. It's my further understanding that the junk to remove vehicle has been removed from the premises, and therefore I have closed my file on this particular case.
You're joining residents very happy.
Great. Next issue concerned, uh, the municipal parking prescriptions. I have drafted a resolution for Borough Council's consideration, designating certain parking areas as, quote, "no parking for the general public" and restricting same to police vehicles and authorized police personnel. Again, this is a resolution, uh, that provides pursuant to Chapter 490 of the Brookhaven Borough Code of Ordinances, that does in fact authorize Borough Council to restrict and or designate no parking areas throughout the Borough by adoption of a resolution. And therefore, the Chief of Police has recommended that certain no parking spots immediately adjacent to the police station be designated as, quote, "no parking areas for the general public." So therefore, the Borough Council hereby designates, according to Chief's recommendations, those parking areas in municipal parking as, quote, "no parking to the general public," and authorizes the appropriate erection of signage in accordance with the regulations of the Pennsylvania Department of Urban Administration. And therefore, if this is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order at this time to adopt this resolution.
What's the motion? Janice, who is the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Alright, the resolution is 2021-27.
And, uh, finally, uh, the next on my agenda item concerns the Brookhaven Borough Employee Handbook, which will be handled by a separate council person, but I have drafted certain revisions to the employee vacation protocols, and prepared an appropriate motion for Borough Council's consideration. My understanding that will be reviewed and perhaps adopted, uh, later at this particular council meeting. Next issue concerns the Pando Property Group, that is the developer that is developing approximately seven single-family homes off of Brookhaven Road. The developer had been in a state of delinquency with regard to outstanding professional fees owed to the Borough for that particular land development project. I'm pleased to report that, uh, our Borough Secretary did receive a check, uh, last week in the amount of $3,458.75 to ratify that particular delinquency. And finally, uh, next on my agenda item concerns the part-time police officer vacancies as a result of obviously these two officers being promoted this evening to the full-time officer position. We do have a number of vacancies, uh, in the, uh, Police Department for a part-time police officer. I have drafted the appropriate legal notice and placed that notice in the Delaware County Daily Times. and placed that notice in the Delaware County Daily Times with certain publication instructions. And I believe in fact that may have been published, in fact, today. I believe I read it in today's newspaper. So with that, Mr. President, I can report General Rogers.
Thank you, sir. Chief Vice.
Good evening again. I'll make this for the month of November. The police department initiated or were assigned a total of 764 task assignments in Delco. Some of the no-buried, six theft, one vehicle theft, one assault, five fraud, three DUI, eight narcotics investigations, one liquor law violation, two suspicious conditions, 26 disturbance or domestic disputes, 73 medical assists, six mental health responses, 35 assist other agencies, seven funeral alarms, 27 vehicle crashes, and 25 hazardous conditions or require weekly calls. Total loss to victims, the amount is $43,673. Recovered of that is $35,465. The reason is because it was a vehicle that was stolen. That vehicle ended up being recovered. As far as arrests, for the month, there were 35 adult arrests, one juvenile, 105 citations were issued, 16 parking violations were issued, and 97 warnings were issued. Very briefly, I just want to commend Officer Greg Martin for his arrest that he made regarding a theft of wire from Lowe's. It is a huge problem. It is ongoing. And when one gets arrested, 10 more come in. So he had a really, really good arrest there. It has had a significant impact on these thefts that we've had there as well as also I commend Detective Haddock for his thermists and his investigation with numerous thefts from Lowe's. His investigations have led to a number of arrests for different subjects that were responsible for high-dollar thefts there and also outstanding arrest warrants for other individuals responsible. So I appreciate both of their hard work.
Can we recommend a lot some way to really reduce? I mean, seriously, because if this is repetitive?
Yeah, it's, if it's not wire, it's something else. It's just convenient, quick stuff that they get. They call them pushouts. They throw them in cars and they run out the door. I mean, it's literally over like that. It's quick. And they go, they go all the way through Lowe's and it's work. It is a shame. Because then we all have to pay more money for things because you're stealing. So I commend both of them for very thorough investigations, really, very nice work. And I'm sure everybody seen we did take control of our new police patrol vehicle. That's in service. So all of our vehicles are now in service, up and operational, which is huge. So I'm very happy with that. Obviously, no shade, no ever, this company was closed thankfully. For most of us, it was a little help and... But no, we really did, we had a lot of fun. I think we did really well. The final numbers, I will report to everybody what we raised. We are still waiting on some of the merchandise, something that the company with getting the material was kind of slow. So we're still waiting on that. It should be any day as long as it's called. But I'm really happy. The officers really put a lot of time and effort into this. And it was really, really a great event. And I think everyone's going to be shocked when they hear the big final tally of what the greatest purpose foundation. So I will be reporting on that later. That is the General Martin Report.
Thank you, Chief.
If everybody's okay with it, I'm going to give guy everything.
Chief Montell. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Brookhaven Fire Company's November 2021 Fire Report. Three fire incidents, 15 non-fire, 31 calls for mutual aid, four drills. Total of 52 calls for the month, 631 fire rescue calls for the year. We had no loss on contents or structure in borough. For the year, our loss was $1,002,000 on property and structure. And for the property dangers, so far this year was $3,460,000 in borough. We've only had, we had one firefighter injured for the year. Our manpower was 52 calls, averaged 14 firefighters in service 891 hours for the month, 7,383 for the year. Four training sessions, averaged 30 firefighters, 225 hours per month, 2,211 hours for the year. We had the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had a building fire on Deepwater Lane. We had accidents at 352 and Upland Road, 3400 Block of Edgemont, Thutton Mill and Lincoln Drive. And we had an accident on Bridgewood Lane. We had a gas leak at Building 11 at Traditions at River Creek. Assisted Upland Fire Company on building fire on Church Street. Assisted Chester Fire Department on second alarm building fire at Third and Clayton. Assisted Rockland Fire Company on building fire on Cornell Avenue. And we assisted Marcus Oak Fire Department on three alarm building fire on East 10th Street. We assisted Chester Township on building fire at Iron Med and Dust Grill Facility. And assisted Rocky Run on building fire at Michael's Craft Store and Grill Hospital. And Aston Township on building fire at Sun Valley High School. We covered West Chester Fire Department while they had their 100th anniversary banquet. Our monthly training was red operations and with our new fast forward, doing rescue evolutions, coastline deployment. And just under note, the fire company battled with COVID for the past month. We had five personnel that were sick that have since returned back to service for the fire company. So we had a couple of people got sick last month. More than ever since the whole time of COVID.
More transports? The most transport since the beginning of COVID?
COVID transports are off.
Since the very beginning of the pandemic?
Yeah, the last batch, we had probably eight.
That's not good.
So we also applied for the state fire EMS grant. I had a conference call with Senator King, funding for some fire company projects. And I'd also like to again thank Council for supporting the fire company with this purchase of these fire trucks. It's a big thing. It's pretty, you guys are really excited, you know? We've been battling through some, you know, repair issues and issues with the trucks. And it's a, it's a really appreciative thing that you guys support so much. So I can't thank you guys enough for what you do for the fire company. And also, we did, the other thing I want to mention was Santa Claus will be on fire truck on Saturday. That's pretty important. Sam Sam, 12 o'clock? Yeah. You call a clock, so we'll be out probably 12 before, whenever we get done. Okay? So our ambulance report for the month of November. The ambulance handled 221 EMS calls for the month. 139 of those were EMS, ALS dispatches, 81 DLS, 97 local alarms, 123 mutual aid. The ambulance has answered 2,009, 91 calls for service for the year, which is really high. And I just wanted to comment, some people saw a poster the fire company put up about EMS billing. We just want to clarify that, you know, under our contract with Crozier, if we do the transport, we do the billing, they get paid from us out of billing. There's no two people billed. If we're the person that's transporting you to the hospital, you only see one bill. If Crozier comes and takes a call, then we're out with our ambulance, ambulance calls, they can bill. But if we transport the patient to the hospital, one bill. And we pay Crozier for their services rendered as a paramedic on our truck. Okay? I just want to make that clarified.
We should share that. Do we share that with the Borough pages?
I shared it today, all of them.
Anybody to ask any questions? The issue is sometimes, you know, Crozier's billing comes out of Prospect in California. So stuff gets messed up sometimes. And though bill, what's happening is we'll transport somebody to the hospital, which we're obligated to bill. It's the whole, have to bill. Well, if we take whatever money's recovered, we pay Crozier. But sometimes Crozier will submit a bill, like they transport it to. So don't pay that bill. Just get ahold of us and we'll get that straightened out. The chief paramedic at Crozier is good with, if we do have issues, we do get taken care of. I was just making sure that people might really be scared if they see that. All right? So I just want to clarify that. If others have any questions, just make sure to contact us.
Thank you, Chief. Adam, there.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of thank yous to do. Wanted to thank the Brookhaven Fire Department, Parks Eye Fire Department, and Garden City along with Chief Vice, Brookhaven Police Department, Chief Splain, Nether Providence Police Department, for helping out with the traffic safety as Delkor cruisers came through the borough for their 15th Annual Cruise for Kids Toy Drive. That is an outstanding event. So thank you guys for helping out. Senior luncheon was terrific. Food was good. Decorations were perfect. Thank you to the rec board for your hard work. The tree lighting event with Santa coming in on the fire truck was fabulous and magical for the kids and the families that attended. And again, thank you to the rec board for your hard work on that. Congratulations to our two newest full-time officers. You will be a great asset to the department and to the schedule. Be safe and best of luck. I want to thank all of our borough workers for making it through 2021. Everyone worked very hard this year. So thank you, everybody, for what you do. And lastly, I would love to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, back there. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three things on the agenda. First one is Brookhaven Glen Development. Need to ratify a street name for the, I actually found some documentation that called it Brookhaven Glen Drive. Speaking with EMS, we think that might be too long. Could have potentially confused with Brookhaven Borough also.
Janice agrees. The council's debating the name, actually.
I have three different names. I have Glen Leaven, Glenbrook, and Brookwest.
Well, you have that, but there's others.
Well, I never did. That's a pretty...
What is the council's pleasure? I would like to...
I wouldn't have Brookhaven at all.
I would like to give this a lot more consideration as per my email on Thursday, I believe it was. I agree with that. How time-sensitive is this, Charles? Will we go till next month?
I'm going to go until next week.
Poor Charles.
We've had no request for any transparency, which will be the first, you know, search or movement of the complex. That's why I need street names. Give no confirmation of making point there yet.
Okay. Let's punt it to January. And we'll discuss it in the meantime. In between meetings. Sorry, Charles.
Second item is the store treatment plant operation and maintenance going to need authorization to purchase miscellaneous matic equipment supplies estimated cost of $2,000.
What's the motion? Who wants the second? Mrs. Heller? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
You better put it on the January bill list because you already need your bills. Okay, thank you. That's, I'll tell them.
And then finally, police station renovation. We accepted biz and there's a bit of... Higher than we expected, so we're going to recommend they reject all this.
I'll make that motion.
So who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions?
Shall we go to the quarters in January? No, we'll just get moved in in January or...
Discuss what we achieve. The thing we're going to do is looking at maybe modifying the whole locker room situation, make lockers that are actually in the hallway.
I know.
So we're going to maybe, maybe just verify it. And then once we get, get a call session, we can see some funding through the stairs from our...
I believe when I spoke with Chief last week, everybody wants to do it. He wants to just make sure that the bike begins fixed and look down the road at every stop.
We're starting tomorrow.
Yeah, so for like the major renovations in there, he had told me that he...
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I've got a few items. First, I have the Public Works Report, the monthly report for November. Mr. Vazquez, who was absent. Bear with me. This probably should have been run through Grammarly. Sanitary storm sewers, sewer backups, 448 Marion Drive. The street is clear. This was a homeowner issue. A sinkhole in front of 4810 Shepherd Street in the area of the storm during the grass. Parks, the grass cutting and trash removal parks is done for the season. The extra trash cans from Martha Park were stored. Dick Dick benches have been removed. Parks are wet. Bench will be repaired and... Mine called Sampson Park was fixed. Winter maintenance is completed in all parks. Buildings have been shut down. I'll skip that because I have no idea what they mean by that.
They were literate.
No, I'll talk about that. The 2021 leaf collection has started. Reminder, leaves should be up 8:00 a.m. Monday morning. If you need a return and pickup, it will be done at the end of the season or when it is done. Let me be a little more clear with that. When they are done, the zones, they will go back to these zones for those that had late leaf fall. So we will not miss a house. Questions about that on social media? Yes, we did. Crew set up and broke down the parking signs, trash cans, vacuum please, and filled potholes along Holiday Prairie. Traffic cones and barricades for the event were provided to the fire police. Stop clicking your pen, please. Winter cleanup is performed on the street, ice, and around Borough Hall. All highway vehicles were prepared for winter. The smaller dump trucks have salt spreaders and spinners installed. They're ready in place for the rounds. Still, they need to stop sign at Jackson Drive. A trailer is removed from 101 Main Road Lane. It was blocking the street. Hot holes, board bags. They patched the bouncer holes. You guys got to leave. We've got to send some of our employees to school. Barricades and trash cans were placed at the trunk or tree at Pivotalard. Pennsylvania won call. Passport tickets were answered for November. Here today, 445 tickets were... One recycling bin was dropped off to residents. Replaced all the flies that became a trial for Veterans Day. Market conducted one and a half hours. Hands-on trade, operation, and unlickish. No accidents or injuries to report. That's the November Public Works Report. I need a motion to approve the November 22nd, 2021 council meeting minutes.
Who wants to make a motion?
Who wants the second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the November 22nd, 2021 council board judges. I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Carries. I need a motion to authorize a four-year contract for Constellation New Energy Incorporated to supply electricity to Borough Hall and grounds a fixed cost of .05958 kilowatt-hours. Mr. Wilworth did diligent research and determined that that was the best rate that we could...
I had a question.
Yes, you do. Go ahead.
I thought it was five years.
It's four years.
That's fine. I just...
It's a fixed rate. Thanks. Fixed rate. Fixed for four years. Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. I need a motion... Oh, I'm going to be reading a motion for the employee handbook amendment that Mr. Wills touched on earlier. I need a motion to modify the Brookhaven Borough Employee Handbook last revised in December 2018 by supplementing the section entitled Vacation Leave contained on page 11 therein include the following supplemental provisions. Vacation requests for all non-police personnel shall be submitted in writing to the council president, department supervisor, or where applicable, the relevant council chair, to that department at least 15 days in advance. The council president, upon confering with the relevant council chair and supervisor that had heard the charge or denies such vacation requests within three days of receipt thereof. Who wants the motion? Who wants the second? All in favor? Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. I have, this is an after-in-back motion. Mr. Vazquez missed the November meeting. In the meantime, we hired an additional seasonal employee for Public Works. Because we had one that quit rather abruptly after a believable week of employment. So I need a motion to hire Justin Greenman at $16 per hour in Public Works, seasonal employee, effective November 23rd, 2021. All in favor? Aye. Any questions? None opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that is all I have. Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you. The first thing I have is the bill list for tonight. It's a little extensive because we're trying to get all the bills done for this month. So the general fund is $88,402.97. Road fund is $390. And trash is $2,020.63. And stores $23,679.52. For a total of $114,493.12. We usually pay quite a few bills to get them into the 2021 bill. I'm going to make a motion that we do...
Who wants the second? All in favor? Any opposed? No questions? Carries.
Thank you. The next, I'm going to lead you to the budget for 2022. And I'm going to make... And I'm gonna make a motion to approve the general fund budget for two thousand and twenty-two, and I will, the resolution deals with the fact that it's two point seven two mils, and it's the total tax rate for all other purposes of two point, it's, it's the same as last year. So again, you look like resolution, so I'm gonna make that motion to approve the resolution. John has the number.
This is for the tax rate?
Yes.
You've taken that motion, Mrs. Howie?
Yes.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Any questions or opposed? And that's what carries. You should have such a good tax increase again. Any job, Mrs. Howie?
Okay, you can...
The red resolution number is twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna motion to... Well, what, well, first of all, the budget was first. That's, that's for the confusion. The most first motion is the budget. The second motion, which I'm making now, is for the resolution.
Okay.
That's the difference. You have to pass the budget first. And the budget would do in four parts because there's four budgets. So the first budget motion was general fund budget for two thousand and twenty-two. So I'm making a motion and we're approving the budget and then we're gonna do the resolution.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
Second. She has made a motion. There you go. Who wants the second? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? There you go. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
So the second is the motion to approve is the resolution for, uh, John has, that's why I was asking for the number so we have it, the general fund tax rate of two point seven two. So that, that may be a motion for that too.
Who wants it?
I'll make a motion.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Two each, yes.
Okay, I know. Well, you, I, you already have that, that one. Okay, the next is the motion to approve the SOAR fund budget for two thousand and twenty-two, and I'm gonna go through the rates. The rates, um, present one, two, and three is four hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. The fourth zone, which is people that Brookhaven plan, is four hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Hilltop and Creekside are four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. So that's, that's included for information. So basically, it's the motion to approve the SOAR fund for two thousand and twenty-two. Just the budget is...
You're making a motion?
Yes, please.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
And the next is the resolution. The ordinance for the tax, and I wanted to mention that Delcor, when we're doing this, ordinance for the SOAR rental charge, it is thirty-five dollars and eighty cents increase for two thousand and twenty-two because Delcor raised their user fee. So if you are in the Delcor system, your tax bill will be included by thirty, increased by thirty-five, eighty-seven. So the next motion is the motion to approve the ordinance, which John has the number, for the annual SOAR rental charge for two thousand and twenty-two.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
But the next one is the motion to approve, yeah, the motion to approve the trash fund. And the trash fund does have an increase because we do, we're in the third year of our trash contract. But when the trash hole goes to dump our trash at the county facility, this year, um, in this year's budget, it'll be a hundred and ninety thousand. So if that is long, the increase is eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents per homeowner for a total of two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. So that's what the budget will be. Um, but we're gonna pass the budget, um, for the trash. So the motion is to pass the approval of the budget for the trash fund.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions?
John, is for...
Motion carries.
The trash contract, do we have one more year left or is this the third year? Or the third year next year? Okay, and then... The general actually go after bids and everything, then pass it. But now we're gonna be the ordinance for, um, trash because trash, it was increased by eleven twenty-eight. That's why we have to pass the ordinance, otherwise it would be a resolution. So I'm making motion to pass the next ordinance for trash collection, which gives us the increase of... So you're doing the budget, you're doing the budget itself, but then you're doing the ordinance, which is, allows you to tax.
You need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Ordinance number eight twenty-three.
Okay. The next item I do have under trash, will be happiness for people. We have had the rebate for people who are eligible. Now, our work to household income will be increased from twenty-five thousand and thirty-five, which means if you're a married couple on social security, you may now be eligible. Usually with just one-person households that really were able to get that. But now if you actually have it, you'll be able to fill it in and hopefully we'll have more people this coming year to get it. Harrisburg changed the annual property tax rate from twenty-five to thirty-five, and when they collected it this past June, but because we were off, we started ours in January, they did it this year, so we're able to put thirty-five thousand. So we, we copied what Harrisburg does. So if Harrisburg lets eligibility be thirty-five, then we, we opt it now for that. So hopefully, um, thirty-five thousand per household income, and that would be a fifty percent rebate. And if you had seventeen thousand, five hundred annual income, you could get the hundred percent rebate, which means you would be getting the two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents for the hundred percent.
Okay.
But you have to fill out the form and give your pay tax. So that's the next, the motion is to pass the resolution for, um, the rebate of trash fees.
Who wants the second? J- uh, John? Go ahead, Mike. The, uh, fifteen, or sorry, seventeen thousand for a hundred percent, does that, does that now, uh, means for couples? Total household income. But, yeah, I understand, we said the fifty percent, is a hundred percent of that also for the couples too?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the...
But that, you probably will, couples will probably get the thirty-five thousand because if you have two social securities. See, now, that was our problem. It was mostly widows collecting because if you had two people, you weren't eligible. So this, I'm hoping we're gonna lock more people to be able to get at least half, which is half of two sixty-one, which is, now, every little bit helps on the economy. Okay, so that's, you did the resolution.
Who needs a second? I'll second.
I'll reset, I'm sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Yes, carries.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
Yeah, that was the resolution for the rebate, okay. The next thing I have to do is to make a motion to approve the road fund budget for two thousand and twenty-two. Now, just to refresh the memory, the SOAR, not the SOAR, the trash, the road fund is only money that we receive from Harrisburg. So we're anticipating two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars in, in the springtime. So that would bring us up to about four hundred thousand that we'll have for next year to do roadwork for Mr. Picante, so we're gonna make a motion to approve the road fund.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any questions or... Carries.
Now, the next, um, motion is to approve the American Rescue Plan funds. Now, in your budget, there is a, um, so I will put together a budget for that, and I'll explain. We did receive four hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars this year. We did spend a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars when we purchased the two hundred and three scars that are in operation right now. That leaves us a balance of three hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Now, in the next year, we should be receiving a second four hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. And that, all of that money will put earmarked for the two fire trucks plus the money that we have. By spring of next year, we'll have three hundred thousand in that escrow. And then hopefully the next year, we'll have escrow for two thousand and twenty-three when the trucks come in. So we'll have that, so we'll pay for the majority of the market. So I'm really, I'm really happy that we did do public safety, because this allows us to help fire company and our police department to have better equipment to help everybody. So I think council did make the right decision because I really did explore everything, but I think this may work. Here's your move back for your buck because the trucks that were mine, we're gonna go up twenty-five percent January first. It would have been eight hundred thousand. We're paying six thirty-five, and we're getting some other discounts that... Rob, Robbin has been did a great job. We had eight bids, and we got the lowest bid, and we really, and they're getting the truck they don't want, and it's a smaller truck. So I think we're doing, I think we're helping everybody, so I do have a couple of things. I'm sort of similar. The next one is the motion for the depository for Brookhaven. The bank we use right now is Brenmore Trust, and since it's gonna be changing, how many January, February?
So what's this?
We'll have to pick, we'll have to pass it again. See, right now, the Fed has not approved that merger as far as we know, is that...
They're calling the Whisbit.
Yeah, yeah, but they haven't, they don't have approved it right now. We have to pass this resolution, same as Brenmore Trust do it now. But then in January, we'll turn to J. C. Whisbit. I mean, that's just a way that we have to work with the Fed. So the motion is the resolution for, um, naming the Brenmore Trust as the depository for the funds. That's the next resolution, John.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any questions or objections?
The resolution number is twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
Just jump right in there.
Yeah, I did. We worked with, uh, in, uh, would you make a... No, we just, that didn't work. No, uh, we had, we'll go back to American, yeah, we just, we just wanted to approve it because we put it in the budget. Uh, I think we forgot the motion for the American Rescue. Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion to adopt the American Rescue.
We did.
She thinks...
I thought it was German or maybe...
I thought we did that too.
I thought we did it in November because I sent the notice at the workshop.
I did, what if it has to be...
No, it has to be done at all sort of session.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, so I make the motion to approve the budget for American Rescue plan.
Who wants the second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any questions or objections? Motion carries.
Yeah, a couple more things. The next one is the automatic bill list. Now, what we do is we have a long list of people that we normally pay, like Pico, Delcora, um, things of that nature, you know, back fees, all kinds of... So what we're gonna do, we're gonna make a motion for the passage of resolution to this, um, that we will be using for two thousand and twenty-two, for the bills on the list, like his insurance and things of that nature. It's so that when they come in, we can pay the bill all the way, and we don't have to pay late fees, and this saves a lot of money on late fees. So the motion is to pass the resolution, which I'm gonna pass to John, to remember it, for the automatic pays that we use.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one.
Okay. Now, every year at this time, we do pass the resolution, letting people know what the salaries of the employees are. So that's what this is. And basically, this is the motion, which is for the resolution adopting fellow salaries. Our position has a generally first, two thousand and twenty-two, so the legal motion, yes, that's John.
Which one of you fine folks wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any questions or objections?
That'll be twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two.
Okay, are we done? About one?
We are done.
Okay, the last motion I have is the motion to advertise two thousand and twenty-two dates for all Borough meetings. John's gonna advertise it this week because this way the public will know what our meetings for every committee is for next year. We have to get it done this month, so John is...
I will send a reminder email to council about that regarding the two meetings.
Yeah, and I need all those dates for the website. Yeah, John has...
They would really screw us up.
So if you can...
I can distribute it to...
Do we have, do we have a message? I'll make the motion.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any objections or questions? Motion carries.
The last thing I have is happiness. You will be getting this in two weeks. This is the twenty-two calendar with colored pictures. I wanna commend John and Pat Plata, who worked tirelessly since June on us. We have colored pictures. When you see it, it's gonna be real. You'll be greeted over by your mail on, on the back, on have your address, so please look for it because it has so much information, colored picture, you'll be going. I mean, they looked very hard. John took the pictures, they were very, very, very... So I just want to let you know, feel a little grab, because you don't know what we're doing. We try to... That's all I have right now.
So what do you, I wanna hear from you until the July twenty twenty-two meeting. I'm just kidding, great job, then.
Great, great job, Jess. Fantastic.
Mrs. Fuchs, give us the footnotes.
Yes, I have a very short report. Sure, somewhat short.
Eating all the hoagies and...
The orders committee will not meet this month, given the holiday. Uh, meeting the government and ours to work on website updates, and I just wanna remind everyone to please give me your committee write-ups by the end of this week. We need them for the website. So please, if you haven't done so, I need them. Um, let's see, so Rec Board updates. The fourteenth annual senior luncheon was held on Sunday, December fifth. We had close to two hundred seniors in attendance. Catering was provided by Moreno's Catering of Brookhaven. Catering was provided by Moreno's Catering of Porchemon. Fun and good food was provided by all of the attendants. And I thought the decorations were the best they've ever been, in my opinion. Everybody said that too.
Especially the bills.
Yeah, I mean, everything, just that everything, the tables, the backdrop, the building, everything.
And they already told me next year's gonna be better.
Yeah.
You should also thank the lady for picking the tree.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Well, Janet says it's so exhausting. It's a collapse.
The 13th Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony was also held on Sunday, December 5th. Yes, it was a very long day for us yesterday. Close to 250 people were on hand to listen to the Coeur d'Alene Elementary School's choir, conducted by Laura O'Keane and Parkside's choir, conducted by Alicia Denny. They sang some Christmas songs and they ushered in the arrival of Santa Claus. Santa and Mayor Denise Leslie had the honors of lighting the tree. Everyone then headed inside for refreshments and getting their picture taken with Santa, crafts, and even making some gingerbread houses. We would also like to thank the following businesses for their support. Brookhaven Giant, Brookhaven Shop, Brookhaven LaLa, Brookhaven Starbucks, West Ridge Baking Company, the Fire, the Brookhaven Fire Company, for giving Santa our ride to the event. And also, we had seven National Honor Society students help us with both the senior luncheon and the tree lighting. So we greatly appreciated it. The Record would also like to thank the Brookhaven Council, Mayor, office staff, Public Works, and everyone's favorite guy, Harry, for all they do year-round to help the Record do what we do for the borough. Tom Dykes, President of the Record, and Jim Rupera would also like to thank all of the Record members for being there all year long for all the events. We work some long days and nights at these events and they all deserve a big thank you. So thank you. That's all I have for...
Tree looks great.
Oh, and...
Lovely young ladies, Johnny.
And we have to thank Lynn for bringing out the new location of the tree lighting.
Yes. Thank you, Lynn. Increase a lot of notch. Happy holidays, everyone.
Mr. Vasquez is excused. Mr. Paffeser?
Very simple, Mr. President. I just... Lieutenant, I've gone for one of the member, attended the police committee, the fire committee, referenced the new trucks, the police committee obviously put in the IREs. We had a Zoom meeting. I forget what it was all about. And the workplace safety meeting will be held sometime in September. I see that my...
Thank you, sir. Happy birthday, Mrs. Heller. Have your cake by Saturday.
Yep. Just a few things. I just wanted to thank the Town Watch for the wonderful craft show that occurred on November 27th, 93. So we were able to enjoy a craft show this year. So thank you, Town Watch, for bringing that back to us. We have a creative committee on Wednesday, December 15th, at 7:30 p.m. in this room. It'll be our backup and starting to strategize for next year for bigger and better. I just wanna echo what Mrs. Fuchs said about the Record. Every... Since the last two to three months, we have a lot of activities that we have. So I wanna thank the entire Record for their diligence and their hard work on making all these events so wonderful and so great. So thank you, especially, you know, led by Tom. So thank you, Tom. This is also just reminded that we are coming into the holiday season. So we want all of our residents to be safe. Down, take your time. We have a lot of crazy drivers on the road trying to get from one place to the other. So please, just take your time, be safe. If you're going out and about, be aware of your surroundings. Remember for all of our decorations, although they're gorgeous and beautiful to see, you don't want any triggering hazards. Be careful on the use of extension cords, hopefully, not before letter W, then against an S that we have any in the month of December. But it's super wetter too, so please, just take your time and enjoy this wonderful time of the year. So happy holidays, everyone. And I stand my line.
Mrs. Heller, real quick before I get to you, Mr. Gilroy. What's the consensus on the workshop, the December workshop?
I don't agree. Yeah.
Because the calendar actually says next week and then the rest of the stuff.
Correct. And I believe it was going to be next week.
It was everything.
It was moved. Yeah, it was moved. It was moved from Christmas.
But we never had it in the past.
No, you can't. Yeah. It doesn't require a motion, but is everyone...
In the past, if we were done everything at this meeting, we don't want to...
Mr. Coutenius, sir, what do you have to say?
We have that Charles Avenue meeting next Monday.
Say what?
We have that Charles Avenue meeting for Saturday, so next Monday.
That would certainly be a conflict.
Thanks, Charles.
Does anyone object to canceling the December workshop? That is my question. As suggested by another... It should be... Mr. Wells over here said it does require a motion, so...
That is an advertised meeting that we set up a year ago at this time. So if we decide to cancel that meeting, that will be done through affirmative motion of our council.
I was in the belief that since it wasn't required, maybe I had it wrong. I am wrong once in a while, very well.
So I should make the motion to...
You go right on ahead.
For next Monday's workshop. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Carries.
He's on his head, Charles. What time's that meeting?
Seven. And now I'm wondering whether we put notice after the residence so they know it's at seven o'clock.
All right, well, you guys will figure that out.